... United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under our own administration, for its citizens and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, January 16, 2018, the time is 7:59. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrako?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, we're gonna go right to the proclamation before the minutes, alright?
Great.
You guys waited long enough, we apologize. We're very happy to have the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band with us tonight, and they did a great job down in Florida at the TaxSlayer Gator Bowl and winning down there and coming home with $10,000, so we're very proud of you, and we have this proclamation that I'm going to read. Whereas the 2017 Nutley High School Raider Marching Band enjoyed a highly successful season that culminated in the band's invitation to compete and perform at various TaxSlayer Gator Bowl activities in Jacksonville, Florida, and whereas the Raider Band was one of only 11 bands from across the country invited to participate in the TaxSlayer Gator Bowl performances, and whereas the Raider Band competed against two other bands in the Contest of Champions Field Show competition on December 28, 2017, where it won first place overall and caption award for best music percussion, color guard, marching and maneuvering and overall general effect, and whereas the Raider Band earned a grand prize of $10,000 and the honor of a solo performance on its field show Ascent during the Gator Bowl pregame program, and also performed with the other high school bands during the game's pep rally and halftime program, and whereas the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band was led by John Maiello, Band Director, Vincent Vicarello, Assistant Band Director, and also received administrative support from Dr. Julie Glazer, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. James Riley, District Coordinator of Fine and Performing Arts, and Principal Dennis Williams. And now for therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey hereby commends and congratulates the members of the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band and staff for their exceptional success at the TaxSlayer Gator Bowl and for representing themselves, Nutley High School, and the entire Nutley community with such distinction through their talent, hard work, and determination. We congratulate you. Commissioners, would you like to say a couple of words before I turn it over to Mr. Carnicella?
Sure, sure, I'll start. We don't want to be remiss, we want to congratulate you again, alright, because this is a repeat performance of capturing this championship and getting this, the additional funding that I'm sure will go right back into the band program. You guys are awesome, alright, you make us proud every time, you pick up those instruments and then you start playing. There's just not enough we can say to tell you how proud of you we are and how we want you to continue to do this, and we hope to see you back here next year so we can do this again. Congratulations.
I'll just add briefly, you know, no one does this alone, so, you know, congratulations to all of you for your fine work. It's great to, for, to have you bring home Nutley pride, which we're so, so very, very proud of. I congratulate all the parents as well because of your dedication and support to allow your students to engage in these activities. I know there's a financial obligation to that as well, so, so just congratulations to all of you, and as Morrow said, we are very proud. Bring home the Nutley pride. Thank you.
You're not only known in this state, but you're known nationwide and perhaps around the world. One of the benefits of having such a great group of young people like yourselves and the parents in this township is that you've become an anchor for this community. You've become a drawing card for people to move here and to get their children involved in something as great as this, and it's something that we'll all be proud of for not just today and in the past, but many years to come. So I want to congratulate you. It really makes me really proud that I live here and that I'm a commissioner here and I'm your friend. Thank you so much, God bless you.
I'd just like to add, you know, I have to say kudos to the directors, the families, everybody that makes this happen year in and year out. I just can't believe the stretch that you guys have had. It's amazing, it's year after year. I know when I was in high school, I played basketball, believe it or not, and, you know, a couple of years the team was good, then it was rebuilding years, and with the band, it just seems like year after year, it's unbelievable, so it's really good to have you guys here, congratulations, to go out of state and to especially Florida and bring home the money and the trophies is unbelievable, and you make your township really proud and you put us on the map, so congratulations.
As a former band parent, I know all the hard work that you put in, you know, days and nights, you're out on Ed Oval with the, the lights shining on you when it's dark out, so there's a lot of, lot of hard work that goes into this, and a lot of support from your parents and your family and the music boosters. So, congratulations again. I'm gonna bring up Mr. Carnicella. Can you say a couple of words?
I'd also like to have our Superintendent, Dr. Julie Glazer, come up as well. We have a resolution that we're gonna read tonight. Okay, oh, that's a little bit better. So, just wanted to let everyone know, we are actually going to do a, a presentation ourselves Monday at our next scheduled board meeting, and we're gonna ask the commissioners as well to please join us if you can. We couldn't be more proud, I mean, we really are. This is amazing. I know last year, we were working on band uniforms, I know we didn't have them this year, but I'm hopeful that when we do get them, you're gonna have a three-peat, and that we're gonna do great things again. I know I heard from some of the parents that they were concerned that maybe the, you know, we were concerned whether we were gonna be as competitive as we thought we would be down there, and we nailed it. I didn't expect anything less. It's a great group of kids, it's a great group of parents, we have great leadership, and hopefully we continue everything that we, we've been doing in this district. You all make us proud with everything that you guys do, and we really, really appreciate that.
I'm just glad that I got to be there with you. It was cold and wet, and you guys were amazing, and, and I don't need to say much more, I got to speak to you all down in Jacksonville. I couldn't be any prouder, and I'm looking forward to everything that comes next.
And I also just wanted to thank, we had some coordination tonight, that the students came back, police department was able to coordinate an escort that brought our kids back into Nutley. I know myself, as well as, or one of our trustees, Brenda Sherman, was out there in the bitter cold, and I will tell you that the temperature did go up when that bus came down with the police lights. The kids were in the bus with their, with their phones out videotaping, we had sparklers, we had signs, we were in the middle of the street, we've done everything wrong, by the way. Everything we did wrong. We blocked the street ourselves, we didn't need police once they got to the high school. But it was, it was just a memorable moment, and I'm, and I'm hopeful and I'm thankful that we've had the opportunity to be a part of it, and I, and I hope that you had the same appreciation that we felt, knowing that you guys did such a wonderful job down in Florida, okay? And we do have a resolution that I'm gonna read, it's a long one, latter whereas, so just bear with me. Recognition of the Nutley Marching Band and Color Guard for winning the Tournament of Champions at the TaxSlayer Bowl Competition. Whereas Nutley High School Marching Band and Color Guard competed in the TaxSlayer Bowl Tournament of Champions in Jacksonville, Florida in December 2017, and whereas the Marching Band and Color Guard won caption awards for best percussion, best color guard, best music, marching and maneuvering, and overall general effect, and whereas the Marching Band and Color Guard won best overall for Group 2A, and whereas the Marching Band and Color Guard won $10,000 and the honor of performing live at the TaxSlayer Bowl Pregame Show, and whereas the Nutley High School Marching Band and Color Guard competes against the most successful and respected programs in both the United States and abroad, exposing our students to the type of competition that forged his character, teamwork, and determination, and whereas by participating in the program, Nutley Band and Guard members learn to balance a variety of responsibilities, maintaining the highest level of academic achievement while committing their physical and mental endurance to strenuous training and competition. Whereas these students have gone on to find success in premier colleges and universities, both in the classroom and in competition, and whereas the program continues to impact our students so positively that alumni and their children have returned to the program to play, march, coach, and contribute to our district as staff members, teachers, and administrators, and whereas the Nutley High School Marching Band and Color Guard has benefited from the unwavering support of the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, and the Nutley Music Boosters. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of Nutley Public Schools in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize and congratulate the commitment of the Nutley Marching Band and Color Guard for this competition and renew its unwavering commitment to support the program and its continued success in the future. Thank you again, and let's have one more round of applause for our, for our children, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnicella, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Maiello, you wanna come up and say a couple of words?
Sure. Well, first, first I'd like to say thank you for having us out. You know, I, I always say that Nutley is a really special place. It kind of was the perfect storm when I came here 14 years ago, where you were looking for someone that, that wanted to achieve big and great things. You know, what we do here between Music Boosters and the town is just truly amazing. It's, it's a partnership that just doesn't happen, and I know this because, you know, the band director world is a very small world, so I'm good friends, well, I've been around forever, so I'm good friends with a lot of other band directors in northern New Jersey, and these things just don't happen by themselves, they don't happen in isolation, they don't happen in any other place. So I, I would like to extend, if you guys wouldn't mind, please, standing up and giving a big round of applause to your parents and all the council members, because without their support, this could never happen, so please, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Maiello. We have proclamations, and we're gonna take a picture, so if we can get all the kids up here, take some pictures.
Absolutely, and again, thank you guys very, very much for tonight.
And, and you, Mr. Maiello.
Yeah. I'm gonna sit down.
Yes, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December 5, 2017, and December 19, 2017. I need a motion?
Have a motion for the past minutes?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for January 2, 2018. I need a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
It's the executive.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to change my, my vote to abstain, I was absent excuse.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Correspondence?
Yes, Mayor. The Knights of Columbus Holy Family Council has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, April 29, 2018, at 1:05 PM at Holy Family Church, 28 Brookline Avenue in Nutley. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, February 11, at 2018, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM during their beefsteak event at the Nutley Parks and Recreation. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Elks, number 1290, has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their St. Patrick's Day Parade celebration on March 3, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM at 242 Chestnut Street. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
St. Mary's has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their Mardi Gras event on Saturday, February 10, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 11:00, 11:00 PM at 17 months Senior Owen's Place.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shea tree report for the month of December, 2017.
Commissioner Evans?
I have a code enforcement department report for the year 2017.
And I have a public works reports, August through December. Let's go to bills.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for Tuesday, January 16, 2018, public affairs, $91,637.50, revenue and finance, $3,317,841.04, public safety, $17,428.78, public works, $518,575.74, parks and public property, $757,170.25, total payroll, $829,69.60, for a grand total of $5,531,722.91.
Who are the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Over comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Hi, I'm Amy Solento, and I live at 70 Newman Avenue in Nutley. And in regards to agenda items, it looks like a contract is being signed with Vasso for a collection of co-mingled recycling, and I'm curious, does that replace the work that's currently being done by both Water and Sewer and the Department of Public Works in terms of collecting recyclables?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that will be outsourced?
We're gonna outsource the co-mingled pickup, yes.
Okay, so does that change anything in terms of staffing, budgeting, overtime?
Yes, it does. As you know, we've been going through a detailed review of all our departments, and one of the things we're looking at is how we can reduce, become more efficient, and reduce our staffing and our manpower, and that is gonna help us reduce our manpower going forward.
Thank you for that. So I guess, is there a timeline to report that back, like, will there be some sort of information that's presented here in terms of the net savings, or?
Well, we have a lot of net savings that Commissioner Evans is going to detail in the coming weeks, so yes, that will be.
So thank you so much for that. The overtime report, is this a significant amount of overtime for water operations? I mean, 44% of the payroll in this two-week period was, or overtime was 44% on top of the, the general salary for water operations? That just seems like an extraordinary amount of overtime.
We had 19 water breaks between December 5th and today.
Okay, so this is for payroll paid, it looks like, January 16, so I don't know what that timeline is, but I'm assuming that's the December, the last two weeks of December, potentially?
Right.
In terms of, I don't know what the timing is for reporting overtime and then processing and making the payment.
Yeah, we're beginning that period.
Okay, so you might have had 19 during that period, or you could have had fewer. So, okay, that's interesting to know. Additionally, the Department of Public Safety, 6% overtime. Seems like there are a number of staff in the Department of Public Safety that could be scheduled accordingly. I mean, I read the police blotter, I'm not sure if the emergencies, you know, warrant significant overtime, it just seems like a lot of money to be paying in overtime.
Traditionally, we, I, that caught my eye tonight also, and traditionally, the police department, I would say, would run about 4,000 every two weeks for their overtime. However, during the holidays, we put anti-crime units out there, we put extra staffing out. Traditionally, we have a lot of burglaries, home burglaries, this time of year, we put presents out there on the corners also, and I'm very happy to report, yes, we did spend some money. We did not have one house burglary through the holiday season in Nutley because of what we prevented. And that, you can't gauge, you can't put, you know, you don't have these guys out there, you don't know what you're preventing out there, but I think the facts speak for itself, with these anti-crime units and spending a few dollars, I'd rather have a safe community and no burglaries than, you know, be conscious of the money, you know, but this time of year, I do have a free hand in it.
For, I appreciate that. And I'm curious, there are things, and I understand that police outside duties are usually covering for construction, PSC and G, et cetera, so is there, is this expense, I mean, is it netted out, is there income that offsets the police outside duties expense of $26,877.50?
The outside assignments, when they're doing road construction or anything, what an outside assignment is usually outside of this, okay, it's not in that summary that you see there. However, I'm gonna check this tomorrow morning because it does seem a little high, and we've, I believe we had an instance where it got mixed in one time or another, but I'm gonna look into that tomorrow, but as the rule is, is that's done separately. So there's no, I mean, when they, when you see the road construction going on, or right now, public service has a big push, that we've actually had to invite Belville in to cover all the, you know, development that Road Chute's doing right now, that does not come out of taxpayers' dollars at all.
Right, that's what I was assuming, so there's an offsetting income, or it's a pass-through payment, and I guess I'll ask you, Commissioner Petrako, and you, Commissioner Evans, is this really kind of a pass-through payment?
Yes.
Okay, and so along those lines, in the Water Sewer Department, they did numerous markouts for PSC and G on many dates, so does PSC and G pay the town of Nutley to do those markouts?
They didn't pay us to do the markouts. They didn't pay us to do the markouts, no. It's part of our duties.
Okay.
They weren't done on, they were done on town time.
And so we're obligated to do that for PSC and G?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We received some paint.
All right, so then I just wanted to say, I appreciate the reports. One or two are double-sided, and the rest are single-sided. It would be really great to see cost savings of paper and the environment, to just print them double-sided. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
More, more, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Petrako, can you explain the e-ticketing?
What would you like to know about it?
What is it?
E-ticketing, we started when John Holland was still the chief here. It's really just an electronic form of ticketing. We do outsource that. It's, that is a revolving door, how we do that as far as the money collected, the fee that we pay, we budget for it, but we get reimbursed for that. You're very welcome. So all it is, is electronic ticketing.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, let's, any Board of Commissioner announcements?
Just, just one, Mayor, if I might. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the first meeting in January, so I just want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy New Year.
Anybody else? Thank you, Commissioner. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petrako?
I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on, and traffic, particularly Article 5. And this is the old intersections. This is an ordinance introduction for Hope Street to add a stop sign on an intersection. After, I move this ordinance be passed to second reading and advertising in Nutley together with the notice required by law, and that the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on, is it January 25th? Correct, Madam Clerk?
February 20th. Why is that the date you have on it? February 20th?
You know what? I gotta get a different power of glasses. You're correct. February 20th, 2018. I have moved the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Ordinance, public hearings. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you. I have a public hearing tonight on an ordinance that was introduced on December 19th relating to the digitizing and archiving of records in the Code Enforcement Department. The amount of the ordinance is for $200,000. It's not new debt. We have canceled all outstanding balances to provide the money to pay for the need for this expense.
More, more, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans? There's a very technical term. What we're doing is the digitalization. It's called vendor lock. Everybody's very aware of it. When you hire your first vendor, he's going to convert that data to some format.
Correct.
And that format may not be able to be transferred if we decide to change vendors, or they go out of business, buy a different company. Are you going to have the data converted to universal, or it can be changed in time?
So my understanding is yes. The vendor we're using is under state contract, and the format fits with spatial data, which is the main system that we use in the town. So, yeah, I appreciate the concern about having, the risk of having to do this again if we did it, but we're guarded against that.
That's our, that's our.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that.
So it will be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number 3378? Seeing none?
Closed public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolutions. Commissioner Rogers? Resolution number 11-18. It's to reclaim February 2018 as National Health, National Park Health Month, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mr. Tucci?
Yes. Whereas bids for the Park Avenue Monopole colocation lease were received and opened on November 30th, 2016, and whereas a bid was received from New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, One Verizon Way, Baskin Ridge, New Jersey, and whereas New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless was the most responsible bidder for a lease of a portion of Block 9701, Lot 4, located at Park Avenue Township of Nutley, in colocation at the Monopole of Irish Equipment, and whereas Verizon was awarded a contract by the Township of Nutley through resolution number 2717, and whereas the parties mutually agree to cancel the contract due to the terms and conditions of the contract being non-resolved, now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey are hereby authorized to rescind said contract. I move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley issued resolution number 16917 on August 15th, 2017, stipulating a bid opening date of October 26th, 2017, at 3:00 PM prevailing time for the Park Avenue Cellular Antenna Installation, and whereas the bid opening date was extended to February 14th, 2018, by the Township of Nutley through resolution number 256-17. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to cancel the bid, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to cancel the bid for the Park Avenue Cellular Antenna Installation. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans, can I skip you?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas sealed bids were received for tree removal service on January 10th, 2018, in the Township of Nutley, and whereas Dujet's Tree Experts, 54 Knots Road, Woodland Park, New Jersey, was the low bidder for the items listed below, tree sizes ranging from nine to 15 inches, all the way up to 36 inches plus. All right, and whereas the contract does not exceed $40,000 from account 8-01-512-200, and funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that a contract for tree removal services be awarded to Dujet's Tree Experts. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that the township clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for alterations of an existing restroom to be made into an ADA accessible restroom for the Nutley Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that sealed bids shall be due on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, at 3:00 PM, addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read in the commission chambers, third floor, Township Hall, at 3:00 PM prevailing time. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas 48 Col. 419 Local Budget Law provides that where any contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2018 budget, temporary appropriations may be made for the purposes and amounts required in a manner and time therein provided. Whereas the date of this resolution is within the first 30 days of 2018. Whereas the total appropriation in the 2017 budget, less appropriations made for capital improvement fund, debt service, and public assistance are as follows. The current fund, $48,549.49 for the water utility, $4,501,005. Whereas 26 1/4% of the total appropriation in 2017 budget, less the appropriations for capital improvement, debt service, and public assistance, and said budget would equal for the current fund, $12,733,231.61, and for the water utility, $1,181,513.81. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the following temporary appropriations be made, and that a certified copy of this resolution transmitted to the Chief Financial Officer for her record for the accounts and distribution that is shown in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey statutes, 48 Col. 419, provides that where debt service is to be paid prior to the 2018, paid in 18 prior to the time of the final adoption of the 2018 budget, a temporary appropriation should be made for the amount of debt service in a manner and time therein. The date of this resolution is subsequent to December 20th, 2017, and the debt service will become due during the first six months of 2018. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the following temporary appropriations be made. In the current fund, interest on bonds, $32,250. The Green Acres Loan, $9,000 for principal, $4,000 for interest, for a total current fund debt of $48,250. In the operating, the water operating account, the loan fund for the NJIT loan, $26,206, with trust interest of $7,873, for total debt service of $33,079. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas RS 54467 permits the governing body of each municipality to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes or assessments subject to any abatement or discount for late payment of taxes provided by law. Whereas RS 54467 has been amended to permit the fixing of said rate of 8% per annum on the first $1,500 of delinquency, and 18% per annum on any amount in excess of $1,500. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, one, that the taxpayer, the tax collector is hereby authorized and directed to charge 8% per annum on all taxes, becoming a delinquent after the due date, subsequent, subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of taxes. It's effective January 1st, 2018, for quarterly tax payments made by cash check or money order, which shall have a 10-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with Section 2 of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date as set forth in Section 1 of the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayment of water charges in the amount of $5,033.58 for Block 9701, Lot 3, Qualifier C0001. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas RS 48 Col. 5-17 allows for the cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent amounts in the amount of $10 or less. Whereas the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action on their part any cancellations of property tax credits or delinquencies of less than $10. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the tax collector is hereby authorized to cancel property tax credits or delinquent amounts in amounts less than $10. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petrako?
This next resolution, I'll just read by title. It's number 7-18. This is the e-ticketing which I explained before. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution 8-18, whereas the township has determined that certain property no longer, certain property are no longer needed for public use. Whereas the Local Unit Technology Pilot Program and Study Act authorizes the sale of surplus personal property no longer needed for public use through the use of an online auction service. And whereas the Township of Nutley intends to utilize the online auction services, propertyroom.com, and whereas the sales are being conducted pursuant to the Division Local Government Services' Local Finances Notice 2008-9 and 2008-21R, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that, one, township is hereby authorized to sell surplus personal property at an online auction website entitled propertyroom.com. Two, the terms and conditions of the agreement entered into the propertyroom.com and the Township of Nutley are available at propertyroom.com and the township clerk's office. And three, a certified copy of the within resolution be forwarded by the township clerk to the following Chief of Police and Chief Financial Officer. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Police Department desires to utilize the police pistol range facilities of the Borough of North Arlington Police Department, having its principal officers at 214 Ridge Road in the Hackett Sack Meadowlands, North Arlington, New Jersey, in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for one year beginning January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018. And whereas funds are available from account number 8-01-308-209 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, Baskin State, New Jersey, that the Mayor and the township clerk be and are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the Borough of North Arlington for use of the police pistol range for the period of January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Knights of Columbus, number 14712, Holy Family Council, License Number 1-18, off-premise merchandise raffle to be held Sunday, April 29, 2018. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, License Number 218, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, and License Number 318, on-premise merchandise raffle to be held Sunday, February 11, 2018. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bids for the collection and service of commingled recycling material were received and opened on December 13th, 2017. Whereas a bid was received from Gator Recycling Company, 278-282, West Railway Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. Whereas the Township has determined that the bid by Gator Recycling Company does not conform to the requirements and the bid specifications and is therefore non-compliant. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the bid by Gator Recycling Company be rejected. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bid for the collection of service of commingled recycling material received and opened on December 13th, 2017. Whereas a bid was received from F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal, 55-93, South 20th Street, Irvington, New Jersey. And whereas F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal was the most responsible bidder. And whereas the contract shall be for the service option of one, with a contract term of one year, with an option for two, one-year extensions at the same price, subject to availability of, availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget, be awarded solely at the Township's discretion to commence on or about February 1st, 2018. Is where F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal submitted a proposal for the collection and hauling of commingled recycled material as per bid specifications in the amount of $169,450. Whereas the funds are available from account number T15-905903 in the amount of $169,450 and have been certified, the Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that a contract be awarded to F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal Incorporated not to exceed $169,450, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract with the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bids for the 2017 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on December 14th, 2016. Whereas the term of the contract should be for one year for the award date, with an option for two-year, one-year extensions at the same price and/or agreed upon pre-stated decrease and subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Whereas the term of the contract shall be extended for one additional contract year beginning January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018, and with the same price option, subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex that a contract be awarded to S. Rattandi and Sons not to exceed $71,000, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bids for Hancock's Avenue Improvement Union to Passake Avenue were received and opened on Wednesday, October 12th, 2016. Whereas Stansial Construction, Bloomfield, New Jersey, was the low bidder. Whereas the amount of, the Township entered into a contract with Stansial for the amount of $155,774.80. Whereas change order number one has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $3,491.66 to be credited to the Essex County Community Block Grant Account, T19909901, for a total contract price of $152,283.14. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that change order number one is attached as a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with Stansial Construction, and the project notes Hancock's Avenue Improvement Union Avenue to Passake Avenue are hereby authorized and approved. It was, move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. This is Resolution 2118, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, authorizing the engagement of Inglesino, Webster, Waschashala, and Taylor as council for the Township of Nutley concerning litigation related to the redevelopment of the former Hop on the Roche Campus. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Roadway Improvement Project to include Princeton Street, Hunt Place, Bayard Street, and also Witherspoon Street Roadway Improvement Project, and the Township of Nutley to receive on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, February 14th, 2018, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing a Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and the, and the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody else to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Honey Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. At the last meeting, it was noted by Commissioner Evans that she was moving to something called the zero-based budget process. Is there an explanation for the change in the budgeting process?
The budgeting process is, follows the state guidelines for, under the law that we have to do that. The zero-based approach basically says it's not about just looking at the money that we had. Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So when you, hit the button. When you do a zero-based approach, it's not about just looking at the money that you have in the account. It's about actually going back fundamentally to say, what do I need? So as if I had a zero balance, and that I was actually going to determine fully what was the money that was necessary to spend that, in that year. So it's just a fundamental way of looking at budgeting to make sure that you crafted efficient budget.
And you had said at the last meeting that you had reduced the budget by, I think, 2 million, and there was still half a million to go. Have we made any?
Potential increase for 2018 in the budget was almost $3 million, and we had moved to a point where we have made adjustments to reduce that amount to 2 million, by 2,400, which left us roughly $600,000 left to address, which we're still working on.
And have we applied again for 2018 for transitional aid, and do you anticipate any transitional aid, and how much?
That's just a variable right now. We have to make application. It's, the applications are due by the end of February, given the timing, and then we won't hear, as we, as consistent with prior years, we won't get a determination of what our aid will be probably until the May-June timeframe.
May-June to find out.
Yeah, just consistent with the year.
So you have no, I mean, it was 5.5, and then last year was 3.5. Do you anticipate any aid from the state ongoing?
Absolutely, absolutely. I anticipate the aid. As to the amount of the aid, that still has to be negotiated.
Okay. All right. And then you had also said, and I know that Superintendent Glazer had reached out to you about doing a joint meeting with the superintendent and yourself, a town hall for the people who were interested in the budgeting process and better understanding the process, that a joint public meeting be held. Have you spoken with the superintendent about scheduling that meeting?
We are in discussions.
You're in discussions? Do you anticipate it'll happen before the 2018 budget?
I'm still talking with her about what she wants to accomplish, because I'm not, not fully clear yet. My understanding at this point is that she would like to hold a session to explain to the public the different rules that apply to the school board under the school district budgeting rules versus the municipal budgeting rules. It's not, from my understanding, it's not about talking about the budget for 2018, just the differences in the rules.
In 2015, 2016, I had made a request that the Board of Commissioners schedule minimally two town hall meetings a year for input outside of the Board of Commissioners meetings, just more of a town hall open forum. And I would once again like to make that request that in the year 2018, at least two town hall meetings for public input on all issues be scheduled. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hi, Amy Salento, 7 Newman Avenue. And I have a number of comments and questions. So in the Watersour Report from November and December, there's a mention of started fixing the parking lot by Chickolini's. I know that in previous meetings, there has been money allocated to have an outside service do a study on what to do with the Chickolini property. And there was a timeline. I'm sorry, I did not get my hands on that specifically. But is there a date when there will be a report presented on what to do with the Chickolini property?
Mr. Jena Tappo, handle that.
Sure. There's no, there's no calendar in terms of a schedule yet. We're working with the planners to kind of repurpose that, at least on a temporary basis, until we know how we're going to develop it. So that's part of the process, was to clean up the parking lot, and then come up with some ideas. And we're working with the planners on that right now. We don't have anything definitive, but we are working with them.
Okay. So when you say the planners, are you referencing the outside company that we hired? Are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about topology.
Okay. So we don't have a timeline, and we don't, but we know that there have been some repairs already made in anticipation of a temporary use?
I'm not sure what the repairs were for, so I can't speak to that. But I know the parking lot and cleaning it up and getting it in order is part of the overall plan. And I think we're going to be meeting with them shortly to talk about more specifics.
Okay, thank you. So in relation to that, at the last meeting, there was a request that the master plan be reviewed, and that it be reviewed in a town hall forum, maybe similar to what Penny was just suggesting. And I'm wondering, is there a timeline for that? The master plan?
The master plan is, the master plan by, by law, it has to be reviewed every 10 years. So the last one was 2012.
Right. So there's no, there's no thought of giving an interim review? I mean, it's 2018.
There's no thought at this point, no.
Okay. So along the lines with the planning board, my understanding that the public comment section of planning board meetings are limited to agenda items. It seems like there's no open public hearing for non-agenda items at the planning board. And it doesn't seem like in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
I have to look at the agenda and what's done on that.
If you could, because it's been consistent in the last few agendas that have been posted online, that it is limited to items for being presented that evening. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jena Tappo, can you address that with Mr. Gazira?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I was not at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and it was a little hard to hear. But I think, Commissioner Evans, you mentioned something to the effect of, we're trying to keep people employed. So I'm not clear if that's related to this revision in the budget plan, and you're just trying to balance employment, or, you know, I wasn't quite clear. I mean, unemployment in the state is at 4.9%. It's just slightly above the US rate of 4.1%, and it's on par with New York City. So I wasn't quite sure what that was referencing.
I'd just say that again, I didn't quite hear your first part.
Oh, I'm not really clear. From the last meeting, you had mentioned something to the effect of, we're trying to keep people employed. But I couldn't hear everything that you said. So I wasn't sure what that meant. Is that related to town employees, or?
I, the context of that, I don't recall. So I'd have to go back and review the minutes so that I would better understand and be able to answer your question.
Okay. So just circling back to when I spoke just before in this meeting tonight, you did mention that it looks like there might be some staff reductions in terms of, you know, outsourcing jobs, et cetera. So, you know, I guess that will be revealed with the budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Additionally, I know there was a mention at the last meeting from Commissioner Petracca about the numbers of fires are increasing. Along the lines of transparency, it would be great if we could get reports like we got for the Shade Tree Department and the Water Department. It's like, how many fire calls were there? I mean, if you read the police blotter, it leads you to believe thankfully, not, you know, there aren't that many. But it would be really helpful from a citizen's perspective to see similar types of reports in terms of fire calls, police calls, et cetera. But help us understand overtime.
Well, I, I mean, it's the second time you brought up overtime. Public safety overtime has been held to a minimum, for sure. And I could furnish you that information at any time. You know, when you look at this cycle and you say, well, and I could kind of see your body language, well, it's $28,000 for, you know, for this pay period. That's not the norm in public safety. Like I said, we do that, you know, through the holiday season because of the uptick in house burglaries, stolen packages, and so forth. And I'm very proud of the police officers for preventing a lot of stuff here. As far as the reports for the Fire Department and, you know, the Police Department, I could work on some of that. I could tell you, you know, fires are contagious, I'll say. You know, you have three or four. We had a string of three or four fires this year. And then, you know what? It gets a little quiet. But it's, it's, you know, definitely a need that I think that we need in the town. Our Fire Department responds anywhere in the town in two minutes. I think it works well with the hybrid system here that we have volunteers. But if a report is what you like, a report is what I'll furnish for you.
Thank you.
All the calls of service I could put on there as well. Did you want the Police Department, or?
I think it would be really helpful and very interesting to the citizens. I mean, we have a very safe town, and you have an effective department.
Thank you.
And it would be great to see, you know, really what's happening. And not just related to overtime, but truly, you know.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I mean, even when I became a commissioner back in 2008, your eyes will open. You can't, you won't believe how busy it is in, you know, in both those departments. Even with the Fire Department doing inspections and life hazards and fire prevention, and the police calls are incredible. And what we drag into this Police Department would make your hair stand up. So thank God we still have good buffers out there, like Bloomfield, Belvo, even Clifton and Lynnhurst. But I have to tell you, you know, public safety is worth the investment in my eyes, and I live here too. You know, you don't hear about stores getting robbed and, you know, too much stuff. So you never know what they're preventing.
Oh, I agree with you. And I'm saying, it would be a nice public relations story in, in terms of saying everything that is being prevented. It would be fantastic to hear.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Matthew Brown, 26 Woodland Ave. Actually, I had in mind to echo some of the citizens of the prior speaker regarding the master plan. We understand that it usually doesn't need to be reviewed till 2022, I guess it is. But given the current situation, which includes redevelopment of a laundry, the Roche property, the Chickolini property, as well, sort of the, the addition of a lot of multifamily dwellments across the town to sort of gum up people's attention, I would encourage this chamber to, Nutley, until 2022, to review that. I think that's an important threshold in the future of the town right now. And I would encourage you to review that sooner rather than later, and to open that process up to cover, to provide some transparency, some common meetings, some input, some call, I think, to be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mr. More, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have two questions. One from Mr. Petracca, and one from Mr. Evans. Received open responses, Mr. Evans, do you like to see there is a board of telephone bills in town? And on here, you clearly see this double billing, because the same number appears on two separate bills, and it happened twice. I called AT&amp;T and they explained it to me, and it seems to be that there's something wrong with the way it's being done. And I have seen these on other ones. I just printed these out.
What's your point, Mr. More? What's wrong? Why don't you tell us what's wrong?
I just, I thought I.
No, it was what did they say was wrong?
They said that they looked at bills, because I had faxed these over to them, because I asked for an opinion on it. And they said that one number appeared twice on two separate bills.
Who did you speak to at AT&amp;T? I'd like to quote him.
I'm not going to tell you my sources, please.
Well, how do you expect us to, wait, how do you expect us to, I'll take your paper in a second.
Okay.
How do you expect us to address it if you won't give me the name of the person?
I would look at the paper, and I would look at the telephone number.
Thank you.
And it seems to be quite evident that it happened on more than one occasion. This is just the three I printed off recently.
I'll take a look at it, Mr. More. But if you really are claiming to be helpful, why don't you give me the name of the person you spoke to, so that I can get right to the heart of it, instead of wasting time?
Because it's one of my, I too looked everything up.
Oh, so you're using one of your, so you're using one of your friends at AT&amp;T to check up on Nutley? Okay.
Yes, I did.
All right. Well, if he's a friend of yours, let him make to be a friend of ours.
I'm not sure about one of you.
Okay.
Mr. Petracca, I have an open response. And apparently we had another accident with a fire truck.
I don't, I don't know which one you have.
Do you want to say?
Sure.
Do you have a date of it, Mr. More? The date of the accident?
It's, it's, all of it's right on there. It's on the collision specialist. We backed a weird truck, a panel, a cabinet.
You're basing it off of a bill for repair of the truck, correct?
It's, we placed it where they said this is an accident.
Counsel, I think I can add. I could clarify.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Was that an accident?
Only, Commissioner, I've been dealing with a lot of these opere requests, so I may have some knowledge, but maybe not all of it.
Mixed them up, maybe.
Maybe.
I believe I could definitely give you a precise answer. Unfortunately, we had, I
Unfortunately, we had, I think in one of the volunteer houses, someone backed into the fire station, you know, with these trucks, you have to understand, Mr. Moore, these firehouses were built over a hundred years ago, I think it's fair to say, and these trucks have gotten bigger and bigger, and when they're in, entering or exiting in a hurry, so I believe this is the one that we had an issue with, with a volunteer backed into something, actually the firehouse. So I think that's the one, but I could give you a better answer. That's the one that I recall off the top of my head. My pleasure. Yeah.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.